Good evening and welcome to the May 16th, 2018, meeting of the Gaithersburg Planning Commission. Alternate Commissioner Philip Wessel is joining us on the dais and participating this evening. As not all commissioners are present, thanks for joining us. First up is the approval of our minutes from May 2nd, 2018. Is there a motion, please?
Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes of May 2nd, 2018 as they're into the record.
I need to abstain.
Okay, you're abstaining, so Phil...
Second.
Sir, it's moving in seconded, can I get all those, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and one abstained, so it's 3-0-1, right?
Correct.
Okay, that takes us to our site plan agenda, and the first up is AFP-7655-27214, Brooks Avenue, addition of a studio unit and associated parking update to an existing multifamily residential apartments in the CBD Central Business District Zone. This is an amendment to final site plan, and presenting from staff is Ray Roaks. Good evening, Ray.
Good evening, Planning Commission.
Much done with the bow tie, thanks so much for dressing up.
As always, unfortunately Phil's not, or Phil's here.
Danny.
Danny. Staff is before you to introduce application AFP-7655, 2017. The applicant is requesting an amendment to final site plan to expand the existing multifamily building to include a new studio unit and update the existing parking area. The amendment also includes a parking waiver for four spaces and to be excused from the city requirement of diagonal parking stalls on a one-way parking module. The subject property is Zoned CBD Central Business District and is located within the Brooks Russell Walker subdivision at 214 Brooks Avenue. Here tonight to present the application and answer any questions that you may have is Hidalia Asensio.
Good evening, sir, everyone.
I'll start your presentation.
Okay, so it's for 214 Brooks Avenue. Additionally, we purchased the property in 2017, and we had a storage place or a place that wasn't being used, so we thought that it would be useful to do an apartment, a basement apartment, one efficiency, and it's approximately 350 square feet. And without knowing, we weren't aware we were working on the permits, that we needed more parking, so that came the part where we had to apply to get the parking permits and the plans for the apartment, so everyone could have enough parking spaces for the tenants that are there. Originally, there are 11 apartments in the complex, and usually it's a five, one bedrooms and six, two bedrooms, and we found out that one, one parking space and a quarter is for the one bedroom, and one and a half parking spaces first for the two bedrooms. So we were working on that, and I have the parking plans here, and additionally, we're requesting four additional parkings at the back of the building, including a handicap which is originally not there, so we will be adding it to the plan with the new construction that would be going on. And at the right-hand corner, you can see right here, our garbage cans would be up in the corner, which would be constructed of a concrete, a concrete, and it would be enclosed also by 12 by 14-foot enclosed, and the concrete would be nine by 12. And then the garbage can or the garbage services pulls out the garbage cans towards the street, and because it's, the truck is too big to fit in the little narrow area, so, and then they push it back. And also, we would also be including one-way signs at the beginning right here, and we would be putting a no-enter sign here and a one-way sign here, so the tenants are aware that that, or whoever comes to the building, it's a one-way entrance. And also, we will...
Are you looking for the drinks? What are you looking for?
Oh, I was gonna say, this would be the entrance, and then this is where we would have a place either on this side or this side, the one-way notification for the people that are coming in. And this is the back part, where these are originally where the trash bins are, they would be moved up here to the corner before it gets to the fence. And originally, right here, this is where the new, another parking space would be located, two of them, two of them would be. And, and then this one, these are also, and then right here, this is where the handicap space would be, so it would be a van accessible also, and another parking space at the, at the other corner.
Just as a recap, Ray, maybe just do a quick net calculation, so what's there now, what is, what is, we're asking, you're looking for a four-spot, four parking space waiver?
How many parking spaces are there now?
Well, is it non-conforming now?
There's eight.
Yes. It is non-conforming now.
Okay, so what...
And there are eight.
There are eight spaces, this moves up to...
To 13.
And...
12 plus one.
Less whatever, the requirement was 14, I guess, or...
Right. The code requires them to have 17, they're providing 13, so the difference is four.
Okay. But it's an improvement over what's there now?
Right.
And the, in the parking calcs, the studio would require one spot?
I believe it's 1.25, I believe, off the top of my head.
Clean for the studio, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And then the dumpster enclosure, the trash enclosure, that's within any required setbacks? There's no...
Yes, there's no setbacks on the site for the dumpster enclosure.
Oh, no setbacks are on the, on the plat, so how far is it from the property line?
That question I do not know. I can bring up the site plan, excuse me. So we can kind of demonstrate it, but I don't believe, oh, I think it's a six.
Does it?
No, it does not say how far away from the...
But with no required setback requirement, it could be up to the property line essentially?
Yes.
Essentially.
Yes.
All right.
That plat doesn't contain any of the minor corrections that were noted in the, in the staff report?
No, no.
Okay, so that's correct, that's actually the correct one. There are no mistakes on that?
There are some mistakes on this, but it's mostly the notes.
Okay.
Sorry, hit the button. It's mostly the notes, it's not actually what's drawn on the plan.
Okay.
All right, any other questions?
Yeah, there was the, the entrance, you said there was going to be a one-way entering, one-way exiting.
Yeah.
On the entrance, in the photo that, that came up on the screen, it appeared that there was sort of like a berm on the side opposite the building. Can you go to that photo, please?
Yeah, I'm talking about here?
Yes, exactly. Now, that berm doesn't seem to be, have any kind of support there or anything, is that your property, or is that the property adjoining?
It is a neighbor's property, there, there was an agreement between the two to provide a wall there, and I think Trudy might have more information on that if you'd like it, but they are working along those lines. There used to be a wall here, they removed it to replace it.
Okay, so something will be there to solidify and to stabilize the land. And that was my big concern about that, because it is narrow.
Yes.
And obviously cars are going to be going a little bit to the, to the right more than they should, to avoid the building, and that's going to cost some deterioration, I'm glad, okay, that, that answered my question, thank you.
I used to, the only question, I'm, I'm assuming that this is all been reviewed, we don't have any issues with, you know, we're increasing impervious surface, we're increasing lot coverage, but in the CBD zone, I'm assuming that's not any concern?
Yeah, it's not required by zoning.
Then I'm, I'm fine with it.
Anything?
No, no questions.
Okay, is there anyone here who would like to comment on this application? Okay, seeing no one? All right, the recommendation, Ray, please.
Staff realized after we submitted the staff report that a separate motion for the parking waiver should have been included, we only included the approval of the site plan amendment. As such, staff is looking for two motions tonight, one for the site plan amendment and one for the parking waiver. And I will read the staff recommendation, please note there are two conditions. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission, based on the exhibits submitted and the staff report findings and recommendations, grant AFP-7855, 2017, amendment to final site plan, finding it in compliance with Section 24-170 and 24-172A of the City Code with two conditions. The first condition being applicant must submit revised final site plans as required to obtain approval by the Department of Public Works and planning staff prior to the issuance of permits, and the applicant to work with staff to approve a final lighting plan prior to the issuance of any permits.
Any questions on the recommendation?
Do we, do we also need, so the parking waiver just covers number, does it also cover the...
It covers the angled parking as well as the number, right.
All right, so just one more time real quick, I'm sorry, if there were no, no improvements being proposed for the site, the parking is an eight for a required number of, how many spaces, what, you remember the...
There's eight, they're currently...
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
Required seventeen.
Without the new unit, though? Oh.
With...
The studio, according to the documents, the studio adds one required parking space.
Just one.
Yeah.
So theoretically...
It'd be sixteen required without the studio.
So there's eight provided, sixteen are required in its current state, they bring it up to thirteen with an additional unit, so it's actually, we net out better for parking, but it's in the CBD where we've relaxed a lot of onsite parking requirements anyway, because of street parking and public parking and shared parking. Right, okay. And I don't, I'm assuming that part of the analysis discovered whether or not there was any complaints or any issues with the tight drive aisles, the access, anything like that over the life of the property and...
Public Works did look at the drive aisles to make sure they were wide enough to allow access, and that's why we decided to go to it.
But there hasn't been any complaints, you know, about blocked access, about problems with...
We didn't look.
No, I mean, we would have gotten complaints through neighborhood services and things.
Right. So I don't, I don't have any real issue with it, I think it's an improvement, nice to see that there is that, that investment happening in the CBD zone, so, and one unit seems like a modest, a modest increase, given as a percentage, one over 10 essentially. So, any, any other issues?
I'll just add that I think it's, it's, you know, part of our urbanization of, you know, the existing CBD, to start adding units where we can to existing structures, so I think it's a great use of an existing structure to add one more unit. Is a wonderful thing without having to build a new building, do a great deal of disturbance, you know, and go through construction, and yet we get another unit, so there's a little bit of densification without a great deal of pain and suffering, you know, so it's really, it's great. So turning, turning unused storage space into a, someone's home is, is a great, I think, addition to the city. And, yeah, I would, I would add that a fresh, clean parking area back there that's, you know, orthogonal and makes some sense is much better than, than what's there now. So I think it's a great amenity for your tenants. I, I also would add that the slant, the angled parking is really about identifying to the general public that something is one-way, it's a visual item, to make it one-way. This is in the rear of a building and used primarily by, you know, repetitively by the residents, so I'm not at all concerned about losing the angle, although I think it's a good, it's a good thing to have otherwise. Then we also have a full 90-degree depth of bay between the two angled parts, so it's not, there's not an issue of a narrower drive aisle. And then the parking waivers, for me, is, is kind of a no-brainer in the CBD, as you guys know, any, you know, a little bit less asphalt is the overall goal, particularly where we know it's going to work, which I think this property, we know it's going to work here. There is, you know, in an urban setting, we do have some problems, we want to make sure your tenants aren't parking in the neighbor's parking spots, we want to make sure there isn't, you know, continual stopping along that public street, we want to make sure that the elementary school is not burdened by anything that goes on here, so, you know, there's things that, you know, we need to keep, you know, track of from a community standpoint, but, but I think this is a good waiver to do.
And then that, that impact is there's more parking now than there is, or there will be more parking per unit than there was before.
More and better quality parking.
Right, good.
I'd also like to add that the applicant was offering additional bike parking, both for the public as well as for the residents, and I'd like to ask, or have the applicant not just offer, but actually provide it, because I think that'd be great, again, in addition to it being the CBD and so forth, so, I think that's, that's a nice amenity to add on there.
Great. All right, any, any further discussion? All right, are we ready for a motion? So first up would be the site plan itself, and then the waiver, do you want the waiver first?
We can do the site plan first, but it's up to you all.
So is there a motion, please, on the site plan? Amendment to site plan?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Planning Commission, based on the exhibits submitted, the staff reports, findings and recommendations, grant AFP-7891, 2018, amendment, amendment to final site plan, finding it in compliance with Section 24-170 and 24-172A of the City Code with the two conditions as noted in the staff report.
So moved.
I need a second.
I'm second, I'm sorry, second.
It's moving in second in all, favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes unanimously. What do you want the waiver, how do you want that to sound? You have, can you read into the record the motion for the waiver?
Yes, we've prepared one for you all tonight.
Okay.
Staff recommends that the Planning Commission, based on the exhibits submitted and the applicant's testimony and staff report findings and recommendation, grant a parking waiver of four spaces of the required 17 spaces, and a permit perpendicular parking spaces instead of the required angled spaces for a one-way drive aisle, finding it in compliance with Section 24-222A of the city zoning ordinance with no conditions.
So moved.
Second. If it's moving in second in all, favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, passes unanimously. Thanks very much, good luck.
Thank you, good luck.
Thank you, have a nice evening.
All right, that takes us then to our second site plan of the, on the agenda tonight, which is SP-7848-2018 at 104 George Street, 1,730 square foot addition to an existing single-family detached residential home in the R90 medium-density residential zone. This is final site plan, and Ray is also presenting that from staff. So give him a chance to turn that, turn that presentation around, that way we can just show him the record.
Good evening again.
Good evening. Staff is before you to introduce application SP-7848, 2018. The applicant is requesting approval for a final site plan to allow, to add 1,720 square foot addition to an existing 660 square foot single-family detached home, and construct a new 576 square foot two-car garage. The subject property is Zoned R90 medium-density residential and is located within the Observatory Heights subdivision at 104 George Street. Here tonight to present the application, answer any questions you may have, is the project's architect, Andre Daniel.
Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. While I'm not the architect, I'm the builder, also property owner. My sister and I bought this property, that would be my home, so. But correction, the total addition is 1,016 square feet, not 1,700.
1,016?
Yes.
Okay.
That's with the front porch and everything.
Well, is the garage included in this as a site impact, is that where that number's coming from, or...
I believe we calculated it from the dimensions on the plans.
So just, just the, just the house up front itself?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, well, basically, we bought the house beginning of the year, and then we just,
that would be our home, has it under my sister's name, so we just wanted, it's very tiny, so just wanted to add an addition and took our garage and basically, and make the place look nice and beautiful.
It's that simple.
I'm also been licensed home improvement contractor for about 34 years in Maryland, so.
Just, just for anybody who might be watching, why don't you go ahead and walk around the, the addition a little bit, the elevations.
Excuse me. So here's a proposed garage, they're proposing to pave this portion of the backyard, it's not currently paved. Here's a proposed addition, and here's the existing house, the existing house stay roughly the same size, and the addition on the back. And let me bring up the architecture. And this is the front elevation, this would be the existing house, a new roof will be added to it, and you can see behind it the larger addition, along with its roof and a new entrance door. And this is the right side elevation, here's the new portion of the house, and here, excuse me, here's the old portion of the house, and here's the new portion of the house. Rear elevation. The left side elevation, again, the old portion of the house and the new portion of the house. And here's the basement floor plan. Here is the main floor plan. And those are the only two floors.
Sounds good. And just to be clear, the second entrance on the right-hand side, that doesn't set up a duplex or an accessory apartment condition, does it?
Uh, no, there won't, sorry, let's go this one.
All right, that would need, that would need a separate approval, I guess, if that was proposed in an R90 zone.
It would, yes, sir.
It would not be in conformance with the zoning ordinance.
Right, okay. Okay. Looks good, any questions?
It's actually a nice addition, so.
Yeah?
No, no questions. Question, sorry. Is there anyone here who is going to comment on this application? Is there anybody popping up to the lectern? So, recommendation, please. I moved fast, I'm sorry.
Staff recommends that the Planning Commission, based on the exhibits submitted and the staff report findings and recommendations, grant SP-7848, 2018, final site plan, finding it in compliance with Section 24-170 and 24-172A of the City Code with two conditions. First condition being applicant must submit revised final site plans as required to obtain approval by the Department of Public Works and planning staff prior to the issuance of any permits, and applicant to provide a super silt fence around the LOD as shown on the site plan currently, before construction begins and during the entire duration of this construction for tree protection.
Okay, great, thanks. Any questions on the recommendation? All right, just as a quick kind of recap, moving into the review of this, what, what other, what other notifications happened? Was this a, was it, there's no HOA, so there's, there were no signatures needed on a neighbor forming like that?
They posted a sign in the front yard, and we notified, we sent out postcards to, I believe, 200 feet from the property.
Okay, and this is Chestnut Meme, or, excuse me, Observatory Heights, so, did HTC do a courtesy review, or were they asked to?
It was not required to at this particular location.
Okay. So it's straight, straight theory really, is a site plan, and it's a final site plan, because I assume that there isn't already one there, so this is, this is one of the catch-up site plans for the, for that neighborhood.
Correct, due to the age of the property, didn't have one.
Right. Concerns, questions?
I guess my, my initial concern, which I've sort of laid on my own, was, you know, just looking at the size of the addition compared to the size of the house, you know, it's, it's a drastic increase, but in, in looking around the neighborhood, and while the properties on either side are more or less the same size as the original house, there appear to be many other examples in the neighborhood of substantively, substantial and similar additions, or even much larger brand-new houses, so, you know, that was really my one and only concern, was just, you know, you're almost tripling the size of the house, but it, it's not without precedent in the neighborhood, so I don't have any concern.
Yeah, just that nearby precedence, three, three doors down, there's a very large new home, two doors the other way, so mid-sized renovation. I appreciate that the, we're keeping the existing house and building onto it, and I think there was some sensitivity, nice design, that just proportions, the house, you know, greets the street with a fairly modest facade, and then steps back into the larger volume. So I think it, so I think it, you know, from a respecting your neighbors, you know, being a good neighbor standpoint, I think it's a nice, nice, simple, clean addition that I think will look, you know, original, frankly. So I'm, I'm very supportive. There aren't a lot of constraints in this neighborhood, just that we don't overshadow our neighbors, that we don't do something that is, you know, you know, exceedingly out of place, and this certainly doesn't meet any of those criteria.
I'm assuming the whole, even the existing house, everything will have new, new exterior cladding, whatever that might be, trim, siding?
Yep.
Yeah.
All new finishes throughout?
Fine.
Okay.
That's great.
All right, great. I, I don't have anything to add, I think it is a nice, a nice way to expand a house without necessarily completely engulfing the old one and, you know, accosting the street, it's really, I think, works fairly, fairly well.
The, the age of the house, is that the siding, is that asbestos siding, or is that, do you know what kind of siding that is?
I believe it is asbestos.
It is asbestos.
Yeah.
So obviously you're going to have to take that into consideration when taking that apart. Okay, just want to make that note.
Okay, any other concerns, questions? Again, a nice, a nice, a nice piece of ongoing growth and investment in a, in a really nice neighborhood, too, so I think it's a good fit.
Oh, I should add, too, I appreciate the garage being in the rear of the house, too, rather than being pulled forward, and obviously, I don't think we would really, I don't think the neighborhood would appreciate a garage forward, but even just, just behind the house might not be something, you've given it the backyard, which I think is perfect, so it's, it's, it's another good design element, I think, to keep in with a single family.
All right, is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, based on the exhibits submitted and the staff report findings and recommendate, recommendation, I move that we grant AFP-7891-2018 amendment to final site plan, finding it in compliance with Sections 24-170 and 24-172A of the City Code with the two conditions as written to the record. Second?
Moving in second in all, favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, passes unanimously. Thanks very much, good luck, thank you. Okay, that takes us to discussion topics, and we are going to talk about...
Drive-through.
...drive-through lane it looks like. Who is, front, oh, yeah.
Hello, how do you be, commissioners?
You got that introduction earlier, I just want to keep it alive, I'm sorry.
Okay, hello, so I'm Alyssa Roth, I'm the transportation planner.
Welcome, by the way, have you been to one of our meetings yet?
I have not, I am new to you.
So excited.
But she's been on staff for over a year.
Over a year, yeah.
Ah, okay.
Well, belated welcome, then, I guess.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, so I'm here to discuss best practices for drive-through lanes. So these best practices are reflected, reflect common elements from multiple municipalities. I researched 14 municipalities in North America, including the US and Canada. Generally, the US had more guidelines integrated into their code, whereas Canada had like standalone documents for their design guidelines for drive-throughs. And generally, guidelines cover 2000 to 2000, or 2015, sorry. So it's important to note, these practices don't reflect everything, engineering items such as turning radii and lane widths, they're covered in the existing standards found in the city's code, and other items are more context-specific, such as lighting and, you know, noise restrictions, that type of thing, landscaping is another thing, and it should be considered on a case-by-case basis as part of any review process. So let me walk you through the best practices. So the general goal of layouts for drive-through facilities is to maintain a strong, maintain a strong street edge, and it kind of, the reason behind that is to minimize conflicts between users of the site, and it kind of creates this pedestrian-scale facade as well, which is also really nice to have. It can be achieved in a variety of ways, mainly placing lanes at the side or rear of the building, not placing lanes in between buildings and public streets, making sure lanes are separated from parking areas with a raised curb, and making sure that, that the entrances to drive-through lanes are kind of set back from site access entrances to whenever possible. And if you look at the diagrams, the, the top one, it kind of has a building kind of oriented to the street, and so pedestrians have a very easy way of getting into the building and, you know, using the site, whereas the second one, the building's rather isolated because of the drive-through lane, and, you know, it could create more conflicts for, for users. As far as the queue lengths, or the, the queue lanes, so the, the lanes are measured from the entrance of each lane, they have different lengths based on the, the use of the, the site, so food-based establishments, such as restaurants, coffee shops, donut shops, et cetera, they generally have room for 10 vehicle lengths with a range of 200 to 260 feet. Then there are non-food-based, so pharmacies, dry cleaners, banks, they generally have room for three to four vehicle lengths and range from 60 to 80 feet. And then there's also another optional use, which is more car-centric, so car washes, I think oil change facilities, that type of thing, and they have, they have room for 10 car lengths with a range of 200 feet. If you note from the, the upper picture, that's, that's like a food-based facility, and you can see the, the drive-through lane kind of circulates through the entire site, whereas the bottom one is a, is a bank site, so it's more direct access. And moving on to bike and pedestrian access, amendment should play, be, be, should be placed near the building typically oriented at the street edge. Amendments should be placed near the building typically oriented at the street edge. Pedestrian walkways should avoid crossing drive-through lanes. But if that's not possible, should maintain the same grade. And that can be achieved with a raised crosswalk, which the diagram below kind of shows. And yeah, just to summarize, best practices reflect common elements, not necessarily outlier situations. Layouts should strive to maintain that strong street edge, purpose being kind of minimize conflicts. And the lengths of stacking lanes depend on different uses of the site. Generally, food-based ones are longer than non-food-based ones. And yeah, facilities should avoid conflict between pedestrians and vehicles. And yeah, overall, we could try and incorporate best practices as much as possible. But we also recognize that every site is unique and given the context restrictions, I mean, it's kind of, or limitations rather, it's kind of hard to incorporate everything. Yeah, and that's all I have. If you guys have any questions, happy to answer.
Thank you. That was a good summary, excellent report. One of the big questions on my mind, and I think we've had for a long time, is before we even get to the conversation about how best to design, best to lay out a site for drive-through, is where are they most appropriate as a concept? Or should we be letting them, have them developed in MXD zones? Now, there's a little bit of a yes-but in that, because we do have banks, we have car washes, we have all these things that look and smell on a site plan like a drive-through, but they're not a fast-food restaurant.
Oh, I see.
So the question is, what about this, you know, I tried to find something from CNU, from anywhere that had sort of a, you know, a more top-level, high-level philosophical look at planning. I found very little frankly on drive-throughs, except that there was a lot of kind of cliche use of the term "drive-through" as in, we're "drive-through society," we drive-through neighborhoods, whatever. But it really didn't directly address the concept of including it and integrating it into a, you know, a fully-developed site plan. So I was curious if you guys stumbled into anything like that, if you had?
I couldn't find anything and quite frankly, like with the US, with a lot of the US design guidelines, it was more of like a case-by-case study and you had a lot of broad language surrounding the drive-throughs. But I did know that in, there was a couple on the West Coast and some in Canada that they were kind of integrating those into like urban areas and more focusing on the pedestrian element of it and kind of creating that access on that, that street edge.
So every year, one of you guys goes to APA, I do too periodically, and we come back saying, "Gosh, we're already doing that kind of stuff." This may be one of those frontiers we could be the first to figure out if we could come up with a decent
PhD thesis. Yeah, I think there are a lot of great examples of auto-oriented sales in urban environments. I think there's a lot of creative things under building, you know, window sales, a lot of you know, creative ways of doing it in an urban environment. And I think most, like CNU and APA and AIA, they're more worried about the street and how the pedestrian's treated, making sure that any amenities are out, are out at the front door that's on that public street.
But my point in all that was, I think, I think, this is totally an impression, that we go too quickly to the cliche use of the term without understanding in a very real sense how maybe it could be integrated in an MXD or in a new urbanism environment in a very well-done way. And that's what bothers me a little bit, is I think we too quickly jump to the cliche use of drive-through as a bad thing.
So if we flip it semantically and we say, "Look, we've designed, we've designed, you know, a quick-service restaurant that is pedestrian-oriented, faces the public street and public sidewalk, that has its, you know, outdoor seating and/or landscaping at the public sidewalk, and it happens to have a drive-through sales window in the back of it, then, you know, and that's off of the pedestrian piece." And it's just a semantic reversal of, it's a drive-through restaurant and we happen to be having pedestrian amenities that, you know, aren't gonna be used. We're building a pedestrian-oriented, quick-service restaurant that has a window sales service. So before, I know, I forget, so let me, I wanted to get into the 90-foot thing, you know, like a lot of the QSR, you know, size scale doesn't allow for like this big 90-foot, nice, compact. One of the problems with urban quick-bike, you know, window sales service, whatever you wanna call it, is that the drive aisle has to be, wants to be far away from the corner for obvious driver's safety. But the size of the actual facility is so small that you don't get that far away if you wanna keep it compact in the drive aisle right against the back of the building. So, do you have any color?
Right, and I think the intent behind that is it's because you wanna make sure that the entrance to the queue lane or the stacking lane, if I can pull it up, is kind of as deep into the site as you can.
Well, go to your next slide up, the earlier slide, yeah, that one.
Yeah. So, yeah, you wanna make sure that it's kind of in as far into the site as you can so it doesn't impact the surrounding public streets or kind of overflow into that. But yeah.
But for example, this is a good example of something that's less than 90 feet from the curb, from the corner, but it's probably the right design from a pedestrian standpoint. It keeps it very compact. There's not all this additional asphalt out there just for queuing and stacking and all this other stuff.
Right, and it's important to note too that the best practices are kind of taken from the common elements with, you know, multiple municipalities. So, I mean, 90 feet is what I came across.
What I'm getting is what, you know, everything is gray, right? So at 85 feet, what's the compromise? At 80 feet, what's the compromise? At 75 feet from the curb, from the corner, what's the compromise? And are there things that we can do to, you know, to reduce the risks involved with being closer to the corner? Is it one-way out? Is it, you know, is there, I don't know what else there is. But is there some traffic pieces that allow us?
Or do you get to a point where you never have a dedicated drive aisle for a drive-through, either exit or entrance?
Always.
That's off of the primary road. It always has to be secondary to the, whatever main entrance onto the site already exists and is accounted for, curb cuts that limit the amount of times that a pedestrian path is interrupted. You know, that's sort of where this may have to end up, I think.
Yes, maybe we draw the line. It may be 90 feet, but you know, maybe we draw the line at 85. Say, hey, look, 84, you know, 10 inches, you gotta keep it on site.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I can look
Maybe it's none, like John said.
I can look into that further if you want, kind of give you a better answer.
Yeah, so I'm after less asphalt and less unnecessary stacking in lanes and having to walk across something that's really just an extraneous drive aisle with no parking on either side. But if it has, can have parking on either side and it's all part of inside the site and it's not a dedicated exit lane or entry lane for the drive-through, I think that's great. But I don't wanna compromise too much by adding a whole bunch of asphalt in order to accomplish that. Like the next slide you have here has that, has that sort of, you know, where we just, there's just a ton of asphalt here that's devoted to, you know, in what is an urban environment, you know, I'm guessing, or we're talking about. And it's just an enormous drive lane that doesn't serve anything but, you know, a machine in a window, so.
Yeah, and I think just as we're, as we have time, I'd really like us to, staff to look at what was done with the Kentucky Fried Chicken because that has a huge lane. And in my rare occasions when I'm there, there's maybe two cars in line.
Well, I would like to say it's rare that I'm there, but I'm not sure I can. But, but yeah, it's never, it's, it takes me longer to get all the way to the end and back up than it does to get my food and get out of there.
Right, yeah.
And I think we have to start to think about, there's some dimensions to this, like how ordering is transitioning from being the big reader boards of the drive-through to being something you do on your phone and just go pick up.
Right.
How other types of businesses could benefit from car service, you know, whatever that might be with dry cleaning, things like that. And quite frankly, how the actual businesses that are getting drive-through business, and if you kind of look at the business side of this, not the design side, it appears that a lot of the food, fast-food stuff is trending down anyway. So, you know, what's the next thing to come along that's gonna demand some sort of car service and can we or should be accommodated? That, you know, we have to kind of figure that out, I guess, along the way. But Phil, I think you've been wanting to say something and we cut you off.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think all of the design best practices are great. I'm sort of where you are, John, like you were speaking earlier. I think the struggle we've been having and I've been seeing recently is the more philosophical question of, you know, is the drive-through use or is the notion that people don't get out of their cars something we want in a given community? And I'm not sure to what extent, I'm not sure how we deal with that. Right, you know, I'm not sure in the context of our zoning regulations and what we're judging developments by, I'm not sure what place, you know, we don't want people to stay in their cars, we think cars are bad. We want everybody to get out of their cars and walk everywhere. You know, I think we can all, any of us who do architecture and urban planning, you know, like that as an aspirational idea, but I don't know, and really think we can drive that past a certain point within the sort of context of where we are now. And I think that's the real struggle. I mean, I think, I think there are lots of ways we can design really nice drive-throughs that function well, that don't impact pedestrians, but I think it's, the struggle everybody's having is the larger philosophical question.
Well, and I think context is huge. So if you're in a position where you're looking at, I can't think of ever being unrealistic that we would discourage retail where the packages were too big to walk home with. You know, we're gonna encourage, people are gonna go to the grocery store and get lots of bags of groceries so they take fewer trips to the grocery store, and they need to load up a car to bring those home. They're gonna go to the home center to buy supplies to improve their home, we wanna encourage that. They're not gonna walk home with that stuff, right? So there's a little bit of a, let's take the realistic word and says, well, then maybe what we do is we leverage the fact that places exist for that kind of transportation. We require them to build big parking lots, so we know we encourage that kind of stuff. We're not saying don't build big parking lots. And leverage what's going to be traffic anyway and, you know, take advantage of that and make a more robust environment for retail, for food and beverage, whatever it might be, if that's what the market demands too, and do it in a way that's sensitive and actually respects the context. To me, the big analogy, the Uber analogy for me is to treat it like the residential areas, which is you put all the services on the alley and you keep the street frontages uninterrupted by garages and driveways and you create the human environment up front and let all that service stuff happen out back. The drive-through to me is just another one of those service aspects. It's a, you know, it's an opportunity for additional commerce in the same place that they would take deliveries, take the trash out, park a lot of cars, wherever that might be, which, you know, there's
Yeah, I don't, I'll split the hair and just say that, just say that that's right. But, and I would add prioritization. So it's, we're prioritizing the street face and the pedestrian environment, but we're still allowing options for anybody. If I don't ever wanna talk to another soul for the rest of their life, that's my right. And I, you know, I wanna be able to accommodate that from a public facility standpoint to that person. We also do need to, I mean, it's not just a joke, with the shared economy and delivery services. I mean, my household, you know, delivery of food is pretty regular occurrence. You guys know our name. And so, you know, and just making that shared economy more and more robust, we're gonna want to make sure that we have infrastructure that makes that efficient.
Or at least allows it. I mean, I think the point is that if we're gonna, if we're gonna sit in a meeting and look at a site plan and you're allowed to say you can't have a drive-through, but not have criteria for why or how, I think we're doing ourselves a disservice, especially during a time when that whole environment is transitioning so dramatically anyway.
And I appreciate the goal of making a greater society, you know. So, and I think it's right, and I'm all for, you know, social, you know, you know, forceful planning, you know, through architecture and planning, but we also, we still need to allow for folks who do aren't. And we need to make sure they're accommodated from a facility standpoint. But we can't, we don't have to prioritize them. And we don't have to de-prioritize pedestrians, which is what we've been doing traditionally, right? So, at least for the last 50 years.
I agree 100%. I'm just, I'm sort of reacting to some of the feedback from the public and some of the debates we've had over the last couple of months, which have been much, to my ears, have been much less about, you know, the prioritization of the design and more about, no.
Yeah, it's a semantic thing, I think it's a problem, right? So we need to stop calling it a drive-through.
And I think the other thing to do is stop using it as a proxy for not wanting fast food in a neighborhood or in a shopping center. I mean, I think if that's really the goal, if you don't want McDonald's to build on the corner, and they're probably not gonna anyway, the way things are going, but if that's really what you don't want, let's talk about that. Let's not, let's not use the drive-through as a proxy for that. If in fact the drive-through can be attached to a bank, to a, you know, pharmacy, you know, the businesses that we've had no problems saying, "Great, do it, let's have it, car service." That to me is part of this, part of what needs to be cleaned up, I think, too. Now, the cool thing about your, Alyssa, about the best practices that you're digging up is that in among those are examples of this, you know. So I think almost by accident, without some of these municipalities coming up with great, you know, philosophical positions on new urbanism and all, they've actually created geometry and configurations that support exactly what we're talking about. So I think it's a great leg up to at least demonstrate there's a real practical aspect to this too. So that's great. I mean, I think that gets us on our way here. What I wonder too is what, from staff, I don't know who I need to look at, but where do we go with this? I mean, I know we asked the question, but, you know, we
The reason all this is
Rob, would you like to answer this?
Yes, because as an outgrowth of the planning commission requesting this, and this is all related, let's be candid with the Saul SDP. And much of the issues, which, you know, I'll talk to you later about requesting the record be opened, the council's concerns again weren't really, two of the council members, it was philosophical, they just don't believe any drive-through should ever come into Kettlin's. But really, one of the linchpins that caused us to reopen was sort of this, it's the operational design issue. What we're really looking for in order to move forward is, because the memo was presented to you and Alyssa summarized it, is basically is the planning commission accepting this memo? You know, sort of this, sort of as we did many years ago with BPAC related to standards for bicycle parking. As we said, for, to do this as an ordinance or a regulation is a completely different ballgame. This is then a policy thing, it has to go to council. We're then establishing stuff that may or may not move forward, especially given, as Commissioner Wessel brought up, sometimes it's really not a design issue, it's a philosophical, personal opinion issue, so.
But I think, I think what I'd like to say, to see in the memo, is in fact that philosophical position, at least a proposed one. And that is that, and I'll say it boldly, I think these can coexist in a pedestrian-oriented community.
And that is currently in the record with Saul. I mean, one of the questions that was raised just now by the commission was, you know, is there examples? There is industry papers in there, this is the future, given the sharing economy. Target in fact, right now, has curbside pickup service that is essentially drive-through. The restaurants, as I said, the technical things about the restaurants is, this is the way things are going, grub hubs.
Stay on that point though, because that's one of the notes I have here, is this idea that the drive-through in a broader sense doesn't even necessarily mean a drive-through window, you know, like the conventional little, you know, weatherproof transaction station with a big reader board. And in fact, can really just be a place you pull over and wait for someone to bring something to your window.
And that is the way the new Amazon quit pickup?
Walmart is doing it.
The Amazon, the Amazon.
Giant is actually doing it.
And Harris Theater has it too, they can drop off the Amazon packages in the front of the store and you can pick it up.
So if you blend this, you begin to realize that people will preorder a lot of this stuff anyway, whether they pull up to a window or pull up to a curb, it becomes a little blurry about
And sometimes it's easier to actually have the separate bike lanes, so that's why things, as the work Alyssa did for the best practices, actually can make sort of what the commission was just alluding to, operationally, it can integrate much better. You had mentioned APA conference, one of the best sessions I attended was talking about infrastructure for the sharing economy, for the delivery economy, that we are not thinking about. You know, how these warehousing and small micro warehousing stations work. And that is a changing dynamic, and now often, you know, the latest thing with Amazon is you can go to a drop shipment area and get your materials, and that is a quick drive-through. Or they can drop it off in your car, which can be in a parking lot.
But I think that's the premise for this memo, that if it looks a little design-heavy right now, I think the front end ought to be more about the fact that as a function, whether you, regardless of how the design ultimately comes together, it's in fact something that can be integrated in a new urbanist, a new urbanism environment, MXD, call it MXD for us.
Well, it's, from our standpoint, it's not just MXD, it's just in general, because this is applicable to all zones. So this is, you know, the direction we had received from the commission previously was you wanted a collection of the operational design facet best practices and not the philosophical debate. If you wish to go that way.
I'm suggesting we do.
No, no, that's fine, I just wanna make sure we're clear. I just don't believe we should limit it solely to MXD because these should be applicable in C2 properties, in I1 properties, in CD properties, in CBD properties.
We can prioritize pedestrian, the pedestrian in all zones, that's fine. As a practical matter, they're probably not in I3 zone, but we can.
Again, with the drop shipment thing, where that's where you have your warehousing, we may very know.
The point is, in other words, in an industrial zone of some kind, as a practical matter, the pedestrian access isn't always a priority. Sometimes big loading docks are, and that's just a fact.
Yeah, so I think your discussion of treating it like a service, the service facade of a building, like we would regardless of what zone it is, it has trash loading and service. And we would deal with that, you know, in a form code kind of way, no matter what the zone was. And that's really what this is. That's really all it is.
So I think we're on to something. I think more specific to proposals that are brought in, we've gotta face this, very frankly, and that is if it's gonna be used as a proxy for fast food, we gotta figure out a way to get out of that hole, get out of that rut. And, you know,
Discuss use.
People say drive-throughs as a way to say they don't want People say drive-throughs as, as a way to say they don't want McDonald's in the neighborhood.
Oh, yeah.
Now, you know, read between the lines, see, it's said literally in places, other places, I think it's implied, we've got to get past that, too, and, and separate use, or separate the business type from the service delivery method.
If we're gonna, if we've got, we have good reason to restrict a business use, don't do it through its extraneous service requirements. Do it because we're going to restrict that use for whatever reasons we have.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, once and for all, kind of separate the discussion, and be very clear about what, what we're advocating, I think. You guys agree on that?
It's just a much more honest way to go about it.
So, now let's say, let's, let's put together a hypothetical situation, in the next six months, we get an application for a drive-through somewhere where it's not a popular proposal because it's a drive-through. How does this get, how does this get proposed, how does this get sort of teed up, then, with this kind of information?
Well, well, again, I, I think, and, and this is obviously an outgrowth of a specific application, where we're sort of going through this now, and staff's position has been, especially the way our ordinance is set up, land use is land use. So if you have a restaurant, you allow restaurant, just because you may like a Ruth Chris and don't like a, a, a Stuckey's, it doesn't matter, because legally, yeah, but, but, but it's sort of the thing, and we don't classify, um, drive-throughs as a separate land use. So again, from our standpoint, just as you had mentioned earlier, if you have a pharmacy, if you have a gas station, if you have an ATM, that all has drive-throughs, just because it's related to a restaurant, or a liquor store in Las Vegas, or wherever else, you, you can't separate the two. That for us, you know, and, and obviously Frank can weigh in, that becomes a slippery slope for denial.
But we've done it for years. I mean, honestly, the, the effective use of this discussion has been to keep drive-throughs out of certain areas.
But we really haven't, though, I mean, we've continued to do drive-throughs.
I understand that in a selective way.
I, I mean, the last one, the last restaurant that was proposed that had a drive-through that I can think of that sort of didn't go anywhere was the, um, Run for the Border on 355, but the drive-through didn't kill that, it was the issues related to historic preservation.
I, I have to say, and there, there's no public record to back this up, so I'll say my impression is that you've had potential applicants talk to staff about doing restaurant development with drive-throughs that have not moved forward because they've gotten the sense that the climate for drive-throughs is not favorable. Is that fair?
I, I would say no.
No, I think it's more operational.
I mean, we've, it's, it's, you know, we've tried to make sure that the drive-throughs are more pedestrian, that they're, that they're treating the pedestrian edge well.
Right.
And so that makes it tough for them to get the type of drive-through or the length of drive-through that they actually want. But I don't think we've said no for, for a reason because it's a drive-through, it's more a functional, the function of getting the drive-through.
So going back to your original question, how this memo would be used, I mean, staff would obviously use it first in its review of any drive-throughs coming through, and in fact, you know, based upon what was written, we're using it to judge, which we will discuss later, the Saul application, how does that comply with these best practices, the redesign that's now being proposed? And we would expect the Planning Commission, sort of in their review also. So, yes, it does make sense to amend the memo, as you mentioned, to talk about, you know, sort of taking out the philosophical arguments and establishing, you know, a drive-through is a drive-through is a drive-through. But, but I think it is important, because we never had these standards, or, or do, had done the research before, to clearly state that if it's a Starbucks, or if it's something food-related, 200 to 260 feet of stacking. We've never had something that said, you know, we have plenty of drive-throughs, you can see through Montgomery County that were older, where the drive-through lane is just a painted stripe. Now we're, we have something that says, no, we want to see a real curb, we want to see physical separation. Um, we, we do, in one of the arguments earlier on about the first design of the Saul, was obviously a crossing the path.
Right.
Well, we didn't have anything to hang our hat on best practice-wise and said, that shouldn't occur. Now we do, but we also have the caveat that, you know, if it's unavoidable, this is actually how you do it. You do, you bring the side, you know, the sidewalk up to the grade of the crossing and create, you know, again, almost a visual, physical barrier, you know, to, to promote that safety, so...
But I think the, I think the, the crux of this is really that this becomes an outback function. It's, it's not a part of the public side of the building, whatever that may be. If it's on the, you know, if it's a sidewalk crossing for the main drive aisle into either the pad site or the shopping center, that's not where you see a sign that says this way to drive-through, you know what I mean? And, and you clearly don't add a curb cut for it, you know, you don't create a separate distinct driveway for it. It's somehow in the, in the configuration of the parking and the drive-ais that already wrap the backs of these buildings or the backs of these areas that have dumpsters and deliveries and everything else going on parking, that's where this stuff belongs. I think that's the sort of the...
And I think, as Alyssa mentioned on, on the first slide, I mean, there is the discussion, you know, that it should be sited on the side or the rear. Uh, uh, again, you know, that, that's, we are happy to say that is the aspirational goal, but again, sort of like what we're dealing with with Saul, where you have a pad site in the middle of a surface parking lot that now incorporates a drive-through, you don't have alleys, you have surface parking lots, that now you are creating something and, and you're working with that, and that was some...
But you have a service facade, though. You have a service yard for that building. Every building has a service yard, whether you want to or not. This doesn't have to be on an alley, it could be facing a parking lot, but it still has a service facade.
So, again, to help clarify the memo with the side or rear, that it should be related to the service facade, that, that's an easy note, if that's really what we're, we're getting at.
Let me ask you this, on the data side, if you're trying to, trying to come up with a criteria for queuing, does it matter what type of business, is that when we get into the discussion of what type of business? Because I know data is published that talks about queuing for restaurants and, and turnover time and banks and things, there are different types of businesses.
In many ways, this was the crux of the memo, because that is the main thing that essentially the city has been silent on in the great debate with, with what is, and, and a lot of the issue with council was, is there enough stacking in the design? And we just hadn't researched, so it was great that, that the commission said, hey, look at best practices, so that's why it was broken down. So we actually have, you know, from sources all over North America, this is essentially the standards by associated land use.
Well, I guess what I'm asking is, let's say you're in a, in a, in a retail zone, I won't say M X D, but just you're in a, in a context where it could be, it could be any one of the businesses that, that are described, that use drive-throughs, right? But the data seems to show a fair, fairly wide range of how much stacking is required for those types of businesses. So an ATM requires a lot less than a, than a restaurant, for example. So since you're in a zone where anything could be on that pad eventually, do you always design and build for the worst case?
Um, I think, well, let's take it for the M X D, um, that becomes the discussion at the SDP level where we decide to limit the uses, and establish sort of what's being thought of.
Okay, fair enough, right, sure.
So if you look at something, yeah, you wouldn't, you don't want to have the bait and switch, where you allow everything and you go under the assumption, you know, it's going to be a low-intensity drive-through, use that only requires three cars, and next thing you know, it's Taco Bell, and you know it won't operationally work. So I think that's, that's where the role of the Planning Commission, the council, along with staff's early review, as we look at these SDPs, to work with them now that we have guidelines, go, look, if you're even thinking about potentially leasing this as a restaurant...
You better declare what it is up front.
You, you've got to design these, you've got to design this drive-through to facilitate that. If it ends up being a lower-intensity use, no harm, no foul, because you can accommodate it, the worst is the reverse, is the flip.
So, so on that chart, on that page, my only thought would be to give it a couple more categories. We've got three categories now, right? To give, to break food base into a couple of different categories, just outback being wildly different than Starbucks.
Yeah, I mean, most of the municipalities, they break them down into those three, but, yeah, I can look into...
Well, I think we ought to also acknowledge the difference between a transaction window and a pickup condition.
Yep.
So if it's, if it's actually the, the conventional or the traditional, I think what people would have is a traditional view of a drive-up, drive-through, where there's a window, there's somebody there, you may be ordering, you're picking stuff up, you're trading, okay, versus some of the curbside pickup and, and the sort of blended drive-through slash quick grab and go.
And I think...
I'm not sure if we can get down that far in the weeds as a zoning category. I think, I think it's, um, you know, it's hard to know, because there are people like my husband who will always deal in cash, and...
Well, here's, I guess what I'm leaning is, if, if we're going to have design guidelines for best practices, almost all of these look a lot like a conventional transaction window, sort of circulation, and we already have businesses in the city that are doing basically just, you know, a, a side pull-off lane that they can, they can put a little sign up that says five-minute pickup or whatever, curb-side or whatever, and there's no, no stacking, no, no, no real formal drive-up, kind of drive-through kind of, kind of geometry, and that may be okay. You know, if we can kind of acknowledge, figure out a way to start to acknowledge that in this...
Well, yeah, I think you're right, that, that we should put something in there.
I mean, we can discuss it on the front end about the various forms, it's taken, I mean, most of the curbside and the new Target model is basically what they do is they go into their surface parking lot, and they predelineate spaces that you pull into, into their surface parking lot.
But that's, that's round peg and square hole thing, right? They're trying to...
Well, even, even their new, their new stores coming in, so they want this, and if you remember the old outback model, as we're talking about, they've done the same thing, you know, they take, you know, curbside, literally as curbside head-in parking...
Luca De Peppa did that one.
Yeah, so...
And, and Macaroni Grilled did it, too.
Different dynamic. Again, our, staff's concern, as we were writing this, is, you know, the, the inevitable scope creep, and again, we're trying to keep it down to what is, what is the base issue? If the base issue that we're hearing from the commission, from the public, and from the council, is operational, what are the base operational design elements of a drive-through? You know, that, that's where we're going. It's going to be hard, sort of as Alyssa alluded to, we can't design every drive-through, and every context is going to be different, so...
I'm suggesting, Rob, I get it, and, and at some point, this will probably look more codified, I'm just saying in this introductory memo, which is really getting this all, really beginning to bundle this up into something that looks like something, acknowledge that there's this classification that is emerging, and it may look different than these diagrams once, once we get into this.
I don't think you can qualify it now, in a way detailed.
And maybe, maybe at the end of the day, this looks like, you know, as part of a development application, any one of the transportation, parking, traffic studies, where, you know, it, it gets a little hard if you're, if you have a speculative building that you don't know who's going to be in it, but I would be shocked if any of the major restaurant chains that, that you're looking at don't have dwell time information and average drive-through cycle time information, how many cars per hour at peak time, like, that should all be stuff that for a lot of these companies, they should be able to justify to us as part of their submission, here's what we're expecting and therefore our queue lane is sufficient, rather than doing it the other way where we try and prescribe something.
But we're, in this case, though, we're getting an application from a developer, we don't know what's going in there, and we don't know what, what that purpose, that sole purpose is going to be at this point.
Yeah, let me, let me rephrase this, I, I'm not even thinking about a new application, I'm talking about opening the discussion now, really with the council, about getting to some level of objective criteria for looking at these applications. So it doesn't turn into, we're not having a drive-through, it turns into, well, what are we doing with this, and what criteria should we use? And all I'm suggesting is that there's another, another tier of, of curbside service, of, you know, car service, that seems to be emerging, some of it's already here.
It emerged.
And, and it may change and morph over time, and I think, I think it's like an introductory paragraph that says something like, this isn't, this isn't the drive-throughs of 30 years ago, this is a whole different, different economic basis for this kind of activity, and a whole different, you know, type of commerce that's, that's, that's using it, it's not just fast food. And, but our suspicion, my suspicion is, we, we have this cliche image in our head of a fast food restaurant as being the model for this thing. So there, there's that level of just understanding as an introductory kind of tone to this, we've got to open this up and come up with more, more objective criteria for grading it. Okay, now we're done with that. Then you've got these great examples from Ottawa, from, you know, the various municipalities that have actually figured out some of the geometry and figured out some of the ways to design for it, that we can use as models moving forward. But they may not all be here, that's all I'm saying. There may be some things that are going to happen, that people will come forward with, and they'll, they'll provide their own data, or analogous data, they'll, they'll have, you know, some other really wacky way of taking care of their, their customers by, you know, waiters on roller skates coming out to the parking lot, and they'll, you know, we'll figure that out, I guess I'm on the way. But, you know, it's, 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 it's very real, it's out there, and we have to be able to come up with a way to look at this without just wholesale dismissing it as a, as a, the wrong way to do this. All the while, the overarching umbrellas, it's, it's about the pedestrian priority, and I think we've never said that clearly, and, and it's time to say that now, that, you know, there's, there's a way to, we, we know there's a way to, to integrate it because we have been already, we've got parking lots and streets and all that. So this just has to be part of that, that equation. So what I want to know is, too, how, so we've got a memo, now, now what happens?
I, I think what we would do is, is redraft the memo with this, and, you know, we'll, we'll certainly send it to the mayor and council. It's not, this is more a policy, so it's...
It is, absolutely, yeah.
It's a policy, so it's not something that, that we're codifying, and I think that the Planning Commission is establishing this as, as the body that reviews final site plans, and, and then go from there, you know, just...
So do you want to get council's comments on it, or get their...
No, no, we would just send it to them.
This was done in the direction of the commission, so we're really looking for the commission to sign off on the memo and have it completed in time for us to put it in the Saul record for the council, because again, many of these issues that you brought up with the, what we understood to be the original scope are the concerns of council.
Right.
Again, even one of the council members who was against the drive-through in general said part of the reason was, the stuff that was included in the record shows that this is the future, and he's concerned more will come in, because of how successful they are, and that's the way things are going, and he just believes they should, and so, you know, it wasn't trying to kill a specific land use, it was the fear of, this is the changing dynamics of the economy, and he's not ready for that, so...
Are you guys, any other points you want to...
No, I think, yeah, if you could add some of the general language for us, and then we're just, we're done, and then it's a living dock, too, so if next year there's a new, something we need to add, we can add it, or create a new one or whatever.
And that's why we understand the flexibility of this as, as a policy, and keeping it sort of at, at the technical level is good, and not trying to codify, because we don't know how things are going to change over the next five years. And, and we're not going to be able to pre-design every drive-through.
And it's exactly as, as Commissioner Wessel said, you know, the people that come in may have a total different model, business model, so we need to be able to be flexible to, to work with them on that.
And this at least gives us a framework for doing that now, that's something we can at least start the discussion from, right?
Great.
Nice work, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have what you guys need to, you know...
Yes.
So basically, just procedurally, we'll, we'll amend the, the introduction, just to, to sort of take some of the stuff we did with the staff reports with Saul, talk about the changing dynamics, reemphasize that, and that it can take multiple forms, and sort of lay the groundwork, and then sort of define what the actual things that we're doing here are related to, to help guide, you know, the review of development. And again, we're happy to emphasize...
And then push any auto-voted sales to the rear service.
Mm-hmm. I mean, i- if there was no concerns from the commission about the actual, you know, definition points that Alyssa brought up outside of amending that one, you know, to talk about, you know, keeping it on the service side, to make sure it's related to the service side you know, keeping it on the service side to make sure it's related to the service side of a building. Yeah, now it's just adding the additional statements and comments.
Good, good, good. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, thanks, Phil. That was a good discussion. Couple steps forward. The next thing up is from the commission, I believe, yes, from the commission. Matt, can I start with you, please?
Nothing from you.
Okay, Lloyd?
Nothing else.
Phil?
Well, since Danny's not here, I'll make the obligatory reminder to everyone that judging by the tents that are showing up in the parking lot, the book festival is, is rapidly approaching from rain, shine, flood or whatever else Mother Nature throws our way this Saturday, so come on out.
And I'll, I'll do the obligatory, but Danny, it's really a great planning thing, right? It's really a great double use of public space, public parking lot, civic building, and now being used for a big public event. It's a great planning.
It is, and we had a rainy one two years ago and it was still very successful. The tents held, people got under them, the authors had great things to say and it was.
Not nearly as much fun, but yeah, it was great.
It was, it was still really good.
Do we know if the plaza fountains will be on or not?
I'm, we'll get a report tomorrow. They had an inspection today.
I saw Michelle had them turned on at least briefly because there was a picture of them.
Well, they were, they were actually testing to see if they worked. That was, that was.
Looks like they did.
Was there a big doubt?
Well.
Odds over/under? Okay.
Good. Okay, is that everybody? So that takes us to staff. Who wants to jump in first?
Rob, you're back. Yes, and you're going to be shocked what this is about. Staff has requested that the Planning Commission make a motion this evening to announce the closing of their record for SDP 7712 2017, the Kettlin Square infill sites, for the record to close at 5:00 PM Friday, May 25th, 2018. The revised plan, which if you look, it takes in many of the elements that we just discussed, is available on the City Project page.
Yep.
Second.
So move to the second and all the better, please say aye.
Aye.
Those, the record will close on May 25th.
5:00 PM, May 25th, and as Trudy's making her way, one more thing. Almost 200 people, survey CD zone, get involved, we want to hear from you. You have two more weeks, participate, please.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
Good.
Hi, Trudy.
You guys did the motion, right?
Yeah.
Well, I am here. We wanted to update you on where staff is with our planning and development strategic directions for FY 2018. And so I'm here to give you an update. Just a reminder that every year, as part of the budgeting process, the mayor and council establish a strategic plan for the overall city. There are 10 different strategic directions and planning and development is there near the end because they're alphabetical. The planning and development overall goal is to ensure all planning and development is built and maintained in a high-quality manner that utilizes sustainable principles to maintain the high quality of life enjoyed by residences and businesses while balancing environmental, transportation, economic, social, and civic needs. And then there's four, or I'm sorry, five key strategies out of that. And I'm not going to read all of them because they were included in your package. So you can see that the planning and development isn't just the planning division, but it's also neighborhood services, it's also our great permits and inspection team. As part of this strategic direction, there are always action, key action items. And so the first one of the historic preservation ordinances, the draft was completed in December, as you know. And then we had a joint public hearing and the mayor and city council will be taking this up at their May 21st meeting. And then I know that maybe you've gone, gone to some of our council and the community programs. They've been sporadic over the years. And one of the goals was to make them and have them in a systematic manner where the entire city is being included. So we're actually having one on, I believe it's June the 24th. And that's for the, what's considered part of the fifth neighborhood, which has Brighton West, Parklands, not Parklands, Park Summit and Crown, and also the Lakelands Ridge area. The second one, as Rob just mentioned, was relating to conducting outreach concerning changes to the CD zone. And the staff came up with a survey that's above what Survey Monkey can do and we're doing that right now. And as Rob said, we're hoping to, by the end of the week, come over the 200 crest as far as people submitting information. The road code, we had a work session, as you'll recall, about typologies. The consultant has completed the revisions and we just sent out notice to the development community so that we can have a time to get some interaction with them in June. The next one is evaluate and update the city sign ordinance. This is kind of added towards the end of the process. So really, we have not been able to do much because we've been working on these other projects. And naturally, these key action items really don't cover our site plan submission area. So we, the staff went to a webinar. Ray went to a couple sessions at APA. And we are continuing to gather best practices on that. And it also gets moved to the FY 19, as you'll see in a minute. The last is to development of pilot bike share stations between Crown and Washingtonian. And we have tentative agreements and we're just now at the point trying to coordinate not only with Montgomery County Transportation, but also our own public work staff too. So the new FY 2019 key action items includes some of the items that were not completed in FY 18 or will not be completed. So the CD outreach, we'll be having a work session. We're pretty sure it's going to be July the 9th to, to present that to you and get feedback from both you and the council on where you would like to go with the CD zone. And then we'll follow up with drafting an ordinance and hopefully have a public hearing by the third quarter of FY 19.
Are the results of the questionnaire being done by, or being sort of tabbed and analyzed by somebody outside? Or is that really just staff pulling it?
That is staff. And you can actually read the results now, if you go online.
The questionnaires, I took it this afternoon, it's impressive.
Yeah, I took it, I took it, but I just was curious, like, when you get all the verbatim's back and you've got all that information, it'll be the staff that'll.
It'll be staff.
Correlate it and, yeah, okay.
Again, the bike share got pulled over and hopefully it will be done very soon. One of the items that has been before the mayor and city council by certain business owners is looking at automotive-related uses in the central business district. Right now, they've been prohibited for, for a number of years and the council has directed us to look at some means of allowing them. Not so much in the Old Town District, which is the core area, but on the outskirts of the CBD zone areas.
What does that mean exactly?
Well, what we're thinking about, most of the automotive-related uses are in former I-1 zones. So, so we're looking at that area along East Diamond Avenue, east, the eastern part of East Diamond Avenue.
Right. Oh, what you were saying is when he moved in new, and though they're grandfathered, I guess, at this point, you're saying if someone tried to establish a new business, they couldn't now?
Right.
Gotcha, okay.
One of the items that our neighborhood services division's looking at is updating the property maintenance code to the 2015 IBC maintenance code.
That's great, that's good.
Then.
An ICC fan over here.
It's great, this is, the code's come a long way, it'll ask three or four additions. It's really got some much better stuff in there that neighborhood services can, you know, rely on to be able to force people to fix stuff up. It's, it's life safety-based maintenance, you know, stuff, it's, it's good, it's great.
And then we'll continue to work with the road code regulations and the actual road code ordinance, which is on chapter 19. Additionally, we are going to update and present the tree manual for adoption. The tree manual was done in the 1990s, so it is in great need of updating. We are planning to wait until the 2019 state legislature period is over because there have been proposals to change some of the forest conservation laws. And we've been working with our partners at the Maryland Municipal League as well as the Maryland County League and to make sure that things are done that cities and municipalities can work with.
So where does the next master plan section fall?
Well, let me get to this.
Okay.
We've been in the process of getting, researching information using Census Trac, the American Citizen Survey. And we hope to have a housing study or a housing report completed by the second quarter and do a work session, a joint work session with the commission and the council. This is one of the final items besides the road code that we want to have in place before we start looking at the transportation and land use.
Gotcha.
One of the, there are several other key action items that are not necessarily under planning and development, but they're under other areas. So under the Parks, Recreation and Culture, they have their master plan is under that for completion in FY 19. And also, economic development, key thing is working on redevelopment of Lake Forest Mall. And of course, planning staff is very involved with that. Then again, here's the sign ordinance, so we're hoping to have something by the third quarter for public hearing. And another item that's been added at the request of the mayor and council is to relook at our fence ordinance.
Really?
And it's related to someone being, their front yard next to a side yard and how it wasn't treated as a front yard. So we're going to look at some best practices for that.
Okay.
So in addition to all your site plan and SDPs and rezonings and potential annexations, this is what we see for the first quarter and the second quarter as far as hearings. Now, for the road code, the Planning Commission is not actively involved in that because it's not in chapter 24. And then the third quarter has a lot going on. So again, with the property maintenance code, that, again, only the mayor and council act on that change and the, also on the tree manual. And that's, that's it.
Busy year coming up.
Yes, indeed.
Busy fiscal year. Excellent, thanks for that presentation.
Sure.
Any comments or questions?
Sorry.
Is there, in, in the context of the tree manual, is there a parallel effort under the historic preservation to update and possibly revise the way the historic design guidelines address trees and may or may not agree with the city code?
We've been talking, and I don't have all the details for you, but I know that we've been talking about doing another survey of the trees because we have a new system called Arbor Pro where we can catalog the trees in the area. So I know that Chris Berger has been discussing this with Andrew Benjamin, our environmental planner, and so.
Yeah, I think there's, and I've discussed this with Christian, with, with Rob on a couple occasions, I think there's possibly some disconnects between the way the, the city's tree ordinances is written and at least the way the HDC is enforcing the, the guidelines, the way the historic district guidelines are written. It's not, it's not their enforcement, it's the way the guidelines are written versus the intent of how they're being, how they're being enforced. So I think there's some possibilities there for streamlining and making them, making the guidelines sort of dovetail better with the tree manual and a little bit more neighborhood user-friendly. That should be pretty low-hanging fruit, so I'll just put that on the.
Yeah, good point. I know the, the new plaza is finishing up construction and notwithstanding the, the effect of the water jets yet, I know they're going to work beautifully. But anything else happening in Old Town in the next fiscal year in terms of initiatives or work at the strategic level? Doesn't look like there's anything really in planning per se, but.
I, I can't think of any right now. I mean, I think we're really trying to get the Fishman project off the ground, so.
Several years ago, when we did the initial, went through the initial design process for the plaza, there was talk about a parallel, related, but separately funded effort to do streetscape design, to do, you know, preliminary concept design for streetscape improvements in Old Town, you know, at least to a concept level. Was that?
I think that was put on hold.
Okay.
Mainly due to funding. That was kind of the biggest issue.
And I think it become, it comes back up now that we have plaza complete and the police station is moving across the street, that, that we look again at street furniture, street, street accessories.
Well, especially, it's going to be, because that was part of our discussion on the police station was how well that engaged the sidewalk or what, what could happen there. And then they're taking all the.
And when we looked at it and started talking about it as part of the, the ad hoc committee that did the plaza, it was more focused on down Diamond Avenue.
Diamond, sure, sure.
You know, addressing, taking, taking the energy that comes out of the plaza, hopefully now that it's done and the improvements and expanding that sort of, you know, you've got streetscape improvements that happened with, you know, when Art Stone did their building right in front and just sort of trying to take that down the rest of the street and really create a cohesive downtown.
And I think the biggest part of that was also a lighting plan to, to improve the lighting.
It was lighting, it was utilities, it was, you know, and I know with WSSC doing their thing, there was a, you know, wait-and-see approach.
Right.
And I think that's high-hanging fruit, right? I keep getting pushed back whenever I bring back up the utilities and all that stuff, you know. It's just such a, enormous dollar figure that everybody pushes back, even though I think it's critical to make it.
But what I think.
Some of the low-hanging fruit, I don't know why we're not addressing that on a more.
I was going to say, I think there's still ought to be an item on here about Old Town somehow. And I, but that's why I was asking if it was somewhere else, if economic development owned it or if, I don't know.
Well, we can look, these are pretty much established for this year and for adoption, so.
Okay, well, it's, it's a comment that can be floated, I think, that, you know, a little surprised there isn't something of a higher profile, putting a priority on Old Town. But, but there may be other things happening that that happens by, you know, by association. It just isn't part of the planning priorities. Okay, excellent, thanks for sharing all that. Where are we now?
With staff.
Anything else, Trudy?
No, great. You have meetings, dates?
Oh, next meeting?
Yeah. Sorry.
It's your chance, Greg, go for it.
June 6th is next meeting. Nicely done. And if you hadn't noticed, I noticed today in, in confirming upcoming dates that our July, first July meeting is actually on Thursday. So it's a Thursday, so note that on your calendars if you're.
July 4th, you're not going to be here.
Kind of bumping through the Wednesdays. All right, anything else from staff? All right, if not, have a good evening, we're adjourned.